The comments. Hearing none, welcome everybody. Consideration of approval of the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Agenda is approved as submitted. Consideration of approval of the minutes of the June 10 and June 15 meetings. Any discussion or questions?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
The minutes of the June 10 and June 15 meetings are approved. Consideration of approval of the consent calendar. Any questions regarding the consent calendar? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
The consent calendar is approved as submitted. Business of the mayor. I won't waive any comments at this point. I may have some things to say about some of the things involving the watershed and so on, but that will be it for that. Public hearing on ordinance 1083. Changing the zoning classification for a certain parcel located within the city of Charles City, Iowa, from R-1, single-family residence, and R-3, multifamily residence, to B-4, highway service business district. Open the hearing. We have the affidavit of publication.
Yes, Your Honor.
Any written comments or objections?
None, Your Honor.
Any oral comments or objections?
Moved to close the hearing.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Consideration of the second reading of ordinance 1083. Discussion.
Well, the Scusser family, they own property generally located between the Chautauqua Guest Home and the Fairway Kmart property, and in between 11th and 18th Street. And this property is owned R1 and R3 residential districts. This was actually established before the Avenue of the Saints was planned. Since the opening of the Avenue of the Saints, this area really has been emphasized for industrial and commercial use. So the Scusser's are requesting that this property be changed from residential district to B4 highway service business district. On Tuesday, June 9th, Planning and Zoning Commission met. They held a public hearing, and they are recommending approval of this rezoning to the city council. The city council did hold your first reading of the ordinance amendment at the last council meeting on June 15th. So we recommend approval of the second reading of ordinance 1083.
Questions? Discussion?
I'd so move. Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
The motion is approved. We'll have the second reading of ordinance 1083.
Ordinance number 1083, an ordinance changing the zoning classification for a certain parcel located within the city of Charles City, Iowa, from R-1, single-family residence, and R-3, multifamily residence, to B-4, highway service business district.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution 86-15, approving revised 28E agreement for joint operation of local access cable channels. Discussion.
Well, the Broadband Commission met here a few weeks ago and discussed the 28E agreement, which last year was the, we had the first full year of a revised contract, and so it came due here at the end of June. And the commission reviewed it and is recommending extending it to a two-year contract rather than a one-year with a 2.5% annual increase on the payment that we paid to the school district. That amount is spelled out in the contract to be a total amount of $36,875 this first year, this fiscal year '16, and then the following year, $37,797. The amounts that we can contribute to community revitalization, $10,000, and to the chamber of $3,900 remain the same. Now, when we last looked at this, from when the commission reviewed it and made recommendations, Ralph Smith reviewed it, made a couple revisions to the agreement, and we are satisfied with those changes and ready for consideration and approval.
Questions or discussion?
I'd so move. Second.
Any further questions? Discussion? Clerk, call or roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution 86-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 87-15, approving contract and bond for public housing project 14-120B. Discussion.
Heidi Nielsen, Housing Director. We've gotten a signed contract from Watertight Construction.
I think I'll have to speak up just a little bit.
The contract is in the amount of $74,800. The project involves replacing siding on six buildings at Morningside Apartments, which includes the two storage garages, in addition to painting the windows on 12 buildings at North Cedar Terrace. The performance bond is also in place. Wagner and Weineger Architects will be overseeing the contract administration and the construction of the project, and the work is going to be funded through the capital fund program.
Questions or discussion?
Basically, you have this money in hand at this time, right?
Yes.
To pay for all of this?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Third. Clerk, call or roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 87-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 88-15, giving city staff authority to close Clark Street on an as-needed basis for McQuillan Project construction. Discussion.
Basically, what we're looking at is that one block of Clark Street that's directly adjacent to the McQuillan Place project. McQuillan Place is looking, requesting to utilize that street for storage of materials and equipment as construction progresses on the building. And so what we'd like to do is be able to put a mechanism in place, which is this resolution, that would allow the police chief to close that portion of Clark Street with a 48-hour notice from the developer. As it is now, the police chief can close things on emergency basis. Otherwise, we bring him to council for consideration approval. And just in an effort to keep the project moving and make things easier, we're looking to put an agreement in place to be able to close that on a short-term basis as the project proceeds. Basically, we're probably going to be looking at that block of Clark Street being closed for the majority of the next five to six months. After that, it could open up to maybe two lanes of traffic, perhaps more, depending on how things progress. But this will give us the ability to close that and open that and make those changes as needed through the construction of the project.
I think we need to do that without a problem because you can see that happening. It's going to come, and you've got to react to what's needed at the time. It can be taken care of.
It's been quite a while since we've looked at this in the work sessions, but I remember there, you know, with that parking lot to the west of where McQuillan's going to be located, everything comes into that parking lot off of Clark Street. Has that all been addressed and access to the other lots, you know, off of Clark Street?
Does the developer need to get involved?
At one time, I know there was talk about putting a driveway, you know, off of Jackson or Riverside or whatever into that parking lot there and things. I guess it's been a long time since we've really talked about any of that, so I guess I don't.
There's been no other discussion on an entrance off of Jackson.
Okay. So is that the whole block of Clark is going to be closed there on the north side of McQuillan? So how are you going to access that parking lot there?
I think it's in, excuse me.
Identify yourself.
Charles Thompson from McQuillan Place Company. I think it's actually that half-block from the alley behind the Wintryck, the old public restrooms there, to Main Street.
Okay.
And so the public will be able to access the Jackson Street lot the way they normally do.
Okay.
In and out, and the construction vehicles as well.
So it's just a half a block of Clark and not the whole block?
Right.
That wasn't laid out real plain in here?
Basically, from the Main Street section, approximately halfway back, so still from Jackson, they could come east back into both of those parking lots essentially.
Exactly.
Okay.
Thank you. It wasn't, to me, it wasn't laid out in here that way, so that's why I was wondering.
The idea is to preserve parking for all the businesses that depend on the Jackson Street lot during construction.
Which has been a key issue of late.
And it also says in here, Charlotte, you've been kind of making rounds to talk to the businesses. You got everybody seen and talked to and...
Yes, I think everyone's been contacted, and we have heard no complaints, at least they haven't filtered to me. And we are paying for, I believe, the cost of the marking for the closure.
We will keep that lot open as much as possible.
Yes, and as soon as we can reopen Clark Street, even on an interim basis, we will do so.
And this spot was chosen as opposed to taking up part of those parking spots, I'm assuming?
Exactly.
I think that'll be seen as a better choice considering the options.
Other questions or discussion?
I'd so move for 88-15. Police chief can use his good judgment on it.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 88-15 is approved. Consideration of resolution 89-15, approving pre-application for RCPP grant. Discussion.
Well, this is what we talked about here briefly at our last council workshop, is the ability to apply for this RCPP grant, which what we're laying out here is applying for federal funding to implement improved land use practices, whether it be from cover crops or buffers or bio swales, basically to improve water quality and help control in the overall flooding aspect of those areas north of us. We're looking at essentially five subwatersheds, four of which are in Mitchell County, one in Floyd, on the Cedar. And we've got about 15 partners lined up with this. The city of Charles City would be taking the lead on making the application for this grant, and it's a pretty heavy-duty grant. Looking at a five-year program which could apply about $1.3 million towards practices being implemented in watersheds north of us. And what we like to see from it is obviously, you know, flooding concerns. We have concerns of those as they come and go, but this eventual water quality improvement, nutrient trading, establishing relationships with farmers and landowners north of us, could be a potential way to help implement some of those trading aspects that we're looking at. And additionally, the DNR is looking to set policy and procedure on how to approach this nutrient trading, and we could help be the catalyst to help drive that and help develop that policy, which would be of great benefit to kind of be on the front end of that, so. We've got Brianna Zimmerman here today from the Iowa Flood Center, and she along with Mary Beth Stevenson, the IDNR, are assisting us in writing this grant, and maybe you could just kind of cover what we're doing here.
Sure, I think Steve did a great job explaining what the RCPP is. Basically, it's just to improve natural resource enhancement and protection in different watersheds across the state. There's about $225 million worth of funding that we'll be competing for, and there's a couple of different classifications that you can apply for, different funding pools. There's a critical conservation area that's 35% of that $225 million, the national pool, which is 40%, and then the state pool, which is the one that we will be applying for funds for, which is 25% of that $225 million. Right now, with the different partners that we've been able to capture for the pre-proposal, which is due July 8th, we're looking at about $1.5 million that we already have in contribution, so we'll be asking for an additional match. It's a one-to-one match, so we'll be asking for an additional 1.5 from this pre-proposal. Like I mentioned, the pre-proposal is due July 8th. They'll likely be able to make decisions on who is invited to submit a full proposal in September. The full proposal would then be due in November, and we would likely know if we received funding in January. So we're looking at fiscal years 2016 through 2020 for this project. And basically, it will just focus on soil quality, water quality, and flood mitigation. What's unique about it is having Charles City be the lead entity and focusing a lot of the work up above Charles City, so really, we're going to try and sell that urban-rural partnership and try and make that a big component of this pre-proposal. Other questions?
So what will the funds that you're going after be actually spent on?
Mostly conservation practices, BMP practices. Mitchell County and Floyd County SWCDs will be providing a lot of technical assistance to get those practices on the land. Iowa Soybean Association is actually going to be doing some work in the area as well. I think they have received funding to put in 25 fire reactors or saturated buffers in the area, so we've gotten a lot of really good matches just out of existing work that will be going on during the timeline that we talked about between fiscal year 2016 and 2020.
Will that be on any kind of a competitive basis or project-specific, or how kind of will that work?
It's administered through EQUIP, so I believe they have a ranking system that they use to determine which practices are prioritized above others.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that they, because this is a pilot project, that they will be looking for ways to define the effectiveness of the various kind of practices that are being put in place.
Sure, there will definitely be some monitoring work being done in the area as well. We always like to emphasize these watershed projects as demonstration areas for other watersheds across the state. And as representing the Flood Center, we'll be continuing our data collection in the upper Cedar as well throughout that project.
We're looking at, as far as right now, the city match is going to be an in-kind contribution of about $48,000 a year in staff time, and possibly some hard cash outlay for administrative costs to NICOG. But that's essentially what we're looking at on a city level, but like Brianna mentioned, we're partnering with a number of different entities that are providing, going to be providing technical assistance, so I've tried to err on the side of caution as far as what our anticipated expenses will be. And based on, Cedar Rapids just was approved for this grant here this last January, and I've spoken to the head person down there that's been coordinating this, and I've doubled where he suggested to double, and so on and so forth. So I'm feeling pretty comfortable where we're at as far as what our outlay is going to be. And we should have the staff availability at that time to do most of this. The one thing that we'll be applying for, some technical assistance dollars for hiring a consultant or a liaison that goes out and meets with farmers, landowners, and is president for field days and various things, to be that person in the field, and a grant would pay for that. But as far as in-house administration, that will be our share as well as any potential cost to NICOG for administration, which I'm estimating to be $10,000 or less a year for that, so.
This field person that you're looking to hire, will that become a city employee or?
I'm anticipating it being a contracted employee for the duration of the grant.
Other questions or discussion? We handed out a map. I hope everybody can sort of make out what this is. What it amounts to is the entire piece there is the Upper Cedar Watershed Management Improvement District. And then the shaded areas are the five subdivisions that we're talking about between St. Ansgar and Floyd roughly, to define where the upper parts of this territory is, just to the north of Charles City. So that's, this gives you a little bit better idea how things set up for this particular project. And I might add, the other thing we're trying to get in position to do is to try to quantify the value of some of these practices so that if it came time to take some action with our wastewater treatment plant, that we'd have some way of communicating with the rural partners as to the value that they could contribute so that we did not have to expend as much money for our treatment plant, which is the inefficient way of actually addressing this problem of having a nutrient overload into the river, which is what everybody is concerned about, and there's a lot of documentation, including something that was just in the Des Moines Register yesterday showing a string of communities up and down the Cedar who at one time or another had violated some of the administrative regulations. So we're going to have to keep working at this.
Sure.
Did I get that right?
Right. Well said.
Any other questions?
I would so move.
Second.
I would just like to say thank you to the city of Charles City for taking the lead on this and, you know, showing your leadership throughout this project, and especially Mayor Urb and Steve for the work that you've put in so far. I think we've got a good pre-proposal, and we're hopeful that we'll get invited to the full proposal, so thank you.
Thank you.
Clerk, call or roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Resolution 89-15 is approved. Consideration of third and final reading of ordinance 1082, adopting the code of ordinances for the city of Charles City, Iowa. Discussion.
This is our recodification, third and final reading. After this, it's law, so. Basically, this recodification effort, we've been working on for the last couple of years to get in place, and the vast majority of it are legislative updates, housekeeping basically on a city level, and just making sure that our code is in line with state code. And so approval of this third and final reading will make it so that we can publish, and once it's published, then it's law. And if you signed up, or if you want a new code book, we have those, Trudy has those, so please see Trudy, and bring in your old one to trade in for a new one, and we're just going to hand those out as needed. If you don't want one, you don't have to take one, but...
They will be online, the new code will be online, so if you don't want to hassle with the book, you can go online.
So we recommend the third and final reading.
So moved.
Haven't changed anything yet, have you?
Not since last week.
I'll second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Hallelujah.
It's not done yet.
That being said, we are making notes for the next change, I mean.
Yeah.
Do we have the third reading?
Jerry? I was just getting comfortable. Uh, which one am I on? 1084?
Do you need a backup reader, Jerry?
I'm ahead of your ways. Right here, 1082.
Yeah, there we go.
Ordinance number 1082, an ordinance adopting the code of ordinances of the city of Charles City, Iowa.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to adopt and publish?
So moved.
Ordinance 1082.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
The ordinance is adopted and will be published.
Now I can say hallelujah, okay, there we go.
Consideration of the first reading of ordinance 1084, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel from M-2, General Manufacturing District, to B-3, Service Business District. Do we have a recommendation from the planning and zoning?
Yes. Let me just go in. Stacy and Stacy Ackerson, they own property located at 1,006 North Grand Avenue. Now, this building was previously owned and used by the Charlie Western Railroad Company. Property is owned M2, General Manufacturing District. The Ackersons, they plan to remodel this building and place an insurance agency on the first level, the ground floor, as well as a dwelling unit on the second floor, so they petitioned to rezone the property to B3, Service Business District. The Planning and Zoning Commission, they did review this request. They held a public hearing on the matter at their meeting on June 23rd, and the commission is recommending that the council approve the request. So we recommend that the council concur in the planning and zoning recommendation and approve the first reading of ordinance 1084.
Questions or discussion?
Considering the history of this building, is there any need for us to be concerned about historical features of this building, or is it not necessary for this project? I mean, it's a neat little building, but I like the fact that they're bringing it back to actually use it. That's a big thing, so.
I've not heard of anything, as far as like being on the register, being a, have the ability to be on the register, I've not heard any discussion on that.
I just don't want them getting too far into construction and destroy the potential historical building, but the fact, like I said, the fact they're just going to be using it is going to be enough to save the building itself. It's a neat little building, so.
If it sits there empty much longer, it'll fall down without somebody needing to worry about it, so.
So moved for 90-15.
Second.
We're not up to...
We're up to 90.
First reading, yep, we're doing the first reading.
Well, first reading, okay, I'm sorry.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other discussion regarding the first reading? Clerk, call or roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, the first reading of ordinance 1084 is approved. Can we have that first reading?
Ordinance 1084, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel from M2, General Manufacturing District, to B3, Service Business District.
Thank you. Consideration of resolution 90-15, setting date of public hearing for ordinance 1084. Discussion.
We're recommending that the public hearing and the second reading be considered at the next council meeting on July 20th. Then that sets it up for a third and final reading for the August 3rd council meeting. So we recommend that the approval of resolution 1915, setting July 20th at 7:00 PM is the date and time for the public hearing, as well as authorizing the city clerk to publish the notice for the public hearing.
Further discussion or questions?
So moved. Second.
Clerk, call or roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution 90-15 is approved. Consideration of the first reading, ordinance 1085, changing maximum length for easement. Discussion.
Basically, what we have here is we have a request from McQuillan Place Project that would like to have a permanent easement with the city in order to place their footings for their building on the northeast end of the project, which is adjacent to Clark Street. The footings are anticipated to project into the city right away by five inches, and there's going to be three of them placed every 22 feet or so. The footings themselves are actually going to be four to four and a half feet below The footings themselves are actually gonna be four to four-and-a-half feet below grade, so they'll be under the ground, and you won't actually see them. But presently, our, the way our code reads is we have a maximum easement life of twenty-five years, which is tied together with franchise agreements and so forth, which by state code, those are limited to twenty-five years. And ours have been, in our code, it's been kind of rolled in with that, so it also has a twenty-five-year life. What we're asking the council to do is consider changing that, so that under particular circumstances, the council can choose to give a longer than twenty-five-year easement. And that's, that's what we're looking to do here. And we're additionally asking to do it on a condensed timeframe. In order to help keep the project moving and stay on pace for construction completion, we'd like to have the first reading of the ordinance tonight, that would allow that longer-than-twenty-five-year lifespan, set public hearing for July twentieth, which would be two weeks from now, hold the public hearing, as well as the second reading, as we typically would, but then consider waiving the third reading on the ordinance, and finally approving it at the July twentieth meeting. Otherwise, we'd be looking at a third reading at the August third meeting. Typically, we don't waive third readings, I'm not a big fan of it, 'cause it usually just gets, gets you in trouble. But in this case, we have a, a building that's essentially being reconstructed on the foundation from a previous building, and that previous building had footings that went well, well beyond five inches out into the street, onto the right-of-way, so that has been the practice in the past, and now we would be effectively changing, changing the easement and making it, you know, technically legal to do that. So, so yeah, I guess we ask that the council consider the first reading of this ordinance, and set public hearing for July twentieth.
So in the event that, that we stuck with the twenty-five-year window, and twenty-five years would be readdressing this to keep the easement, and would essentially be a wasted time for that council, because the building's in place, it, yeah, there's, it wouldn't be unnecessary essentially just to renew it.
Right, and, you know, obviously, the, I'm sure, you know, the lender for the project has, would have concerns about only being able to keep a building there for twenty-five years.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense.
So, we'd like to extend that, in this case, to be for the length of the building. And what you see before you tonight is we have an updated permanent easement, and the change in that was, there was a couple of changes that Charlie had asked for, and one of them refers to the length of time there is from when a, if a building, if the building were to come down, we had written in there that they would have two years to reconstruct before the footings would have to be removed. We had a request to change that to four, and what Ralph and I talked about today was changing it so that a reconstruction would begin in two years, and be completed within four, so that we don't have an extended period of time where that's in mid-construction or nothing happening, where the, the footings would be sitting there in limbo or not removed. So, that's how we addressed that, that first issue. Second issue, there was a request to change on the city's ability to waive, our ability to request the footings to be removed. If we have, if we have sewer line, or telecommunication line, or anything within our right-of-way, we can say, well, we would like that to be removed from the city right-of-way, we have that right. And that was one of the requests, that we take that out, and Ralph could probably address that in more detail, but we don't think that's necessary, I mean, it's not very practical. I can't imagine an instance where we would request that the footings come out with the building standing there, that just would not be very practical for anybody. And then finally, the last request was on the, on the insurance indemnification, and it read that, that they would provide five million dollars worth of coverage for any problems that the footings would cause with any other city utilities or things in the right-of-way, and it was read for an indefinite term, and so we've, we've toned that down, I guess you could say, to be effective for the construction period, that they would identify and, and hold us harmless during the construction period of any issues that the footings might cause within the city right-of-way. Again, I can't imagine it causing any issues, there's no public infrastructure on that side of the street, and much less four, four feet below grade where it would be an issue, so... But we've, we've changed that down to during the construction period of the building, so those, those are the changes that are on the new copies in front of you, as opposed to what was in your packet.
With this five inches, is that something that was brought about by, once they got into the soils down there, was that a change, or was this part of the original plans? I guess I'm just trying to figure out why it's coming to us a little bit late.
Well, I think initially, the thought it was gonna project, project out about eighteen inches, and I think it's just been a matter of having the property, property properly surveyed, and finding out where those lines are, and how much it's gonna project is partly how we came to it, coming at us at this point. Charlie, I don't know if you have any more to discuss on that, but that's, I mean, we were aware that there was probably gonna be some need to work within the city right-of-way, but we didn't know how much, or exactly all the details, until just recently. And, you know, the limitation of the twenty-five year is something that really came about.
Okay. Ralph, you're all satisfied with where we're at in this thing?
Um, yeah. Steve has outlined changes that were made today to the agreement in response to a letter I received from Judy O'Donohue, and I have not had a chance to talk to Judy about those changes yet, but Steve has accurately described what those changes are. And so tomorrow, if I can get hold of Judy, I'll seek her confirmation that those will be acceptable. And we can go over that in more detail, I can go over it in more detail on the night that we actually asked to approve it, and, but, but that catches the basic changes. I, I think that the, some of the delay, delay's probably not the right word, some of the effort on this came from the fact that the old building encroached somewhat on the right-of-way, much as encroachments exist up and down Main Street with coal bins and other things, and my guess is that in most cases, those were constructed by the property owners and just tolerated. But when McQuillan Company asked for an easement, then we had to determine whether or not we could actually grant an easement. And my conclusion was that although it's a general proposition, the city can't give a permanent easement for a structural or permanent fixture in the public right-of-way, most of the cases that addressed it talked about the fact that you couldn't deprive the public of use of the right-of-way. And so, this is premised on the fact that these footings won't deprive the public in any way from use of the, of the right-of-way, either above ground or below ground. So, and, and, and there's, and so I think on that basis, it's, we're justified, but, I would say that this would be a very limited circumstance where we would give a permanent easement for a permanent, more or less permanent structure in the right-of-way. It's very, it's very minor invasion of the, of the right-of-way, and it doesn't affect anything. There might be circum, in, in most cases, we wouldn't give an easement for a permanent structure in the right-of-way.
Thank you.
Further discussion, we're, we have three things here, but we're back on the first reading of Ordinance ten-eighty-five.
I would so move, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
First reading is approved, we'll have the first reading.
Ordinance number one-zero-eight-five, an ordinance amending section one-four-three-point-zero-four, limit on term of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Charles City, Iowa, by authorizing the grant of a license or easement within the public right-of-way or on public property for a term of more than twenty-five years under specified circumstances.
Thank you. Next up, consideration of Resolution ninety-one-dash-fifteen, setting date of public hearing for ordinance ten-eighty-five. Discussion, we have had considerable discussion, any further discussion?
I'd so move.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-one-dash-fifteen is approved. Consideration of Resolution ninety-two-dash-fifteen, setting date of public hearing for easement for McQuillan Place Project. Discussion, again, we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-two-dash-fifteen is approved. Next, we're going to consider a motion to go into closed session pursuant to Iowa Code Chapter twenty-one-point-five, I, for evaluations of city administrators, city clerk, and city attorney. Before we go into them, we need a little discussion as to who's gonna stay and be secretary and all that.
And I suppose, Ralph, we need to have a formal request from Steve or I to go into closed session. I will do that on behalf of Steve and myself to go into closed session, so...
Second.
Okay, everybody is anticipating that we're going to go into closed session.
See you, Charlie.
Thanks, Charlie.
See you all, all you guys in a couple hours.
Oh, my...
I saw First Avenue dug up.
How many gallon a minute, or a day?
Thirty thousand.
A day? That little bitty hole?
Are you ready?
Okay. Okay, next up is a consideration of Resolution ninety-three-dash-fifteen, approving contract, employment contract with city administrator.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second. Any further discussion? Clerk, call the roll.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, Resolution ninety-three-dash-fifteen is approved. Consideration of Resolution ninety-four-dash-fifteen, approving employment contract with city clerk. Any discussion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Clerk, call the roll.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Resolution ninety-four-dash-fifteen is approved. Miss land's correspondence.
None, Your Honor.
City attorney's report.
Nothing.
City clerk's report.
Um, the next planning session will be the fifteenth of July, and I will not be here, so Ginny will be here. Oh, gosh.
A lot of cheering.
I will not be here either.
Oh, 'cause I know Mike isn't gonna be here, he told me that, you're still not gonna be here, Mike, that you're gonna be gone?
That is, that is correct, I, I have other pressing issues that day that I cannot make it.
Okay.
So the rest of us should show up, or we aren't gonna have it?
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it's a, it's a planning session. And then code books, I know Steve, I think, mentioned this earlier, but if you do have an old code, old code book...
I got one of them.
Please bring it in, and I'll switch it out, and we'll get the new stuff in there, so...
I've looked high and low, and I don't believe I've ever had one, to be honest with you.
'Cause I have everybody, all the councilmen on the list are supposed to have one, so whether it didn't get handed down to you possibly when you took over, it's very possible. Very possible.
I've never seen one either, but...
And then let me know, how many of you want actually a hard copy? I know Keith said he doesn't want one, how many of you want a hard copy at your house?
Available online, I can get it online.
I got one nineteen years ago, I haven't looked at it yet, so I probably get one of them.
Okay, so you're okay. Mike, how about you?
I can probably go online.
Okay, I won't worry about it then, okay.
Not at all.
Very good.
Is that it?
Yep.
We'll miss you, or I'll miss you next week, Ginny.
City administrator's report.
I'll call, okay.
I will also be gone next Wednesday, the fifteenth, I have...
Anything going on next Wednesday?
We might have Girl Scouts coming, making a request for a pause.
Not a planning session?
A planning session. I can't think what else is on there, generally.
We have, yeah, we have the dog ordinances on there.
Oh, wow.
Well, I don't know if that's, at this point.
They have to have the council there for that one.
It's on there now, but it's...
Let everybody take some of it.
Okay, since we had two of them gone, you wanna bump that, okay.
Actually, no, what?
Dog one.
Yeah.
Why don't you go ahead?
You tried that, we're going back into closed session.
Seriously, you're not gonna be here either, Steve?
No, I've got my ICMA summer conference in Birmingham.
Oh, I thought you were just joking. Oh, my, yeah, we definitely don't wanna talk dogs then, okay.
And we're not gonna be ready at that point.
Okay.
Well, you can figure it out, obviously.
What, is the twenty-seventh is what day of the week?
Monday.
Monday? Okay.
Next planning session.
That'll be the next planning session, yeah, the twenty-seventh. So we can put the dog on there?
Put the dog in there.
Twenty-seventh of July is a Monday, yeah, I think...
Unless the dog committee doesn't want to put the dog on there.
Okay.
I think the dog needs to...
Dog committee needs to...
Get on the track.
Committee needs to meet to make it...
Discuss tonight about when we're meeting.
Okay.
That ironed out. Other than that, Fourth of July went really well, I thought we had a very good couple days, our presentation was, was, was great, and people seemed to enjoy it, so, and I don't think the bridge closure caused too many more problems than what we already normally have. I mean, a few people, I think, complained about the bridge not being open fast enough. I'm sure that they can go to pedestrian bridge, that's fine, so, all in all, I think that worked well. The last thing I wanna mention, well, I'm, I've got, I've got the weekly update report ready, I'm gonna email that out to you guys tonight, so you can get caught up on a couple things going on, it's rather, it's kinda long, but they won't always be as long as they are, but, so I'll have that for you going out tonight. And lastly, that pipe that you passed around, that was, that was a, that's a lead pipe service line, that was found, I think, over the cor, First Avenue, like, over the first...
About, what about...
I mean, this two-hundred block of First, First...
Up there by the church, isn't it?
Could be. Ironically, I think it's in front of a home of somebody that works for a plumber, but, yeah, you know, the water pressure's kinda low, but we, we hired that, that group, Westrom, to come in this, this, this summer and do leak detection around town, I think we paid, I know, we paid three thousand dollars to do it, and it's the same group that we had come in last year to find those leaks, we had them in the frozen water mains, and we found at least eight or nine locations that are pretty bad. This was, well, one of the worst ones, where they just could tell, they could hear water, they could detect water going, in good amounts, and so they dug it up over there, and they found that, found that service connection. And that, that hole in there, that's about thirty thousand gallons a day going through that hole, into us, you know, it's all sandy around there, so the water was just draining away, there was no obvious flooding out in the street, I don't even know if the grass was any greener than the rest of the yard, but it's one of those things where it starts off as a pinhole leak, and then just after years of this, I just, I thought, Corey brought that in, I asked if I could hang on to it for a while so we could do some show and tell, but finding that one service line, basically, you know, I more than paid for having that guy come in and do the entire town.
And that was a thirty thousand gallon loss per...
Day.
Day.
Retail, that's two-hundred and three thousand dollars a year.
Wow.
At the lowest, at, you know, that's over four-hundred and fifty thousand gallon, the more water you use, the less we charge, so that's at a dollar eighty-eight per thousand on two-hundred and two thou, retail, I mean, obviously, does it cost us to have to pump it? Yeah, it's, we have a, a water loss that's right around twenty percent, it's a little high, so it's something we're working on, we wanna get down around fifteen percent, I think we paid, I know, we paid three thousand dollars to do it, and it's the same group that we had come in last year to find those leaks, we had in the frozen water mains. And we've, we've found at least eight or nine locations that are pretty bad. This was, well, one of the worst ones, where they just could tell, they could hear water, they could detect water going, in good amounts. And so, they dug it up over there, and they, they found that, found that service connection. And that, that hole in there, that's about thirty thousand gallons a day going through that hole into us, you know, it's all sandy around there, so the water was just draining away, there was no obvious flooding out in the street. I don't even know if the grass was any greener than the rest of the yard, but it was one of those things where it starts off as a pinhole leak, and then just after years of this, I just, I thought, Corey brought that in, I asked if I could hang on to it for a while so we could do some show and tell, but finding that one service line, basically, you know, more than paid for having that guy come in and do the entire town.
And that was a thirty thousand gallon loss per...
Day.
Day.
Retail, that's two hundred and three thousand dollars a year. At the lowest, that, you know, that's over four hundred and fifty thousand gallons of it. The more water you use, the lesser we charge, so that's at a dollar eighty-eight per thousand on two hundred and two thou, retail. I mean, obviously, it's a process, have to pump it, but, you know, it's, we have a, a water loss that's right around twenty percent, it's a little high, so it's something we're